At this time, I'll call the September meeting to order of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners. At this time, we'll stand and we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Langley and the pledge by Commissioner Buzzio.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful that you have allowed us to assemble here one more time to do the business of your people. Grant us the wisdom and understanding to make good pertinent decisions pertaining to the business of your people. Grant us your peace. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America into a republic which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask if anyone has a conflict of interest that you would like to disclose at this point in time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to clear up something that happened at the last meeting where at this point in the meeting I said that I may have a conflict of interest. I would not know until the issues arose. And people went out of this meeting and started saying that Hood Richardson was doing work for the solar people. It's fine if it were true, but it is not true. It is a lie, and whoever's telling it is lying. I wish they would come and see me so I could identify them. The conflict that I was talking about was that my granddaughter is a student at Terraceea School, and depending on what issues that came up, I could have a conflict of interest, but I would not know until it was actually presented. So please stop telling people that I work for the solar people. Although if they pay me enough money, I probably would work for them.
Thanks for that clarification. Anyone else have... Okay, B. and none. We're down to item number D, the approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Got a motion by Commissioner Buzzio, second by Commissioner Langley. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Okay, we're down to the public comment section. And the first one is Jennifer Alligot. And here again, I'll just remind you, you have three minutes and I'll have the time.
I just love being the first one. All right, let me get my social situation. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm glad to see you again for maybe the fourth time in a row. Currently, the solar facilities have become an issue to the citizens of Beaufort County. The citizens of Beaufort County have requested a moratorium to halt further permitting until guidelines are drawn to protect all our resources. I ask that you consider the following. A one-and-a-half-mile safety buffer between facilities, school, hospitals, and private residences. Liabilities regarding remediation for cleanup. Requiring a bond from the Energy Corporation to guarantee the cleanup costs will not be those of the taxpayers of Beaufort County and their children. I ask you to consider long-term financial effects to the county, such as the approximate net loss of over $1 million had the Wilkinson Solar project gone in its original location. I ask you to consider long-term effects of substations, solar panels, wind facilities that will impede on our natural resources, farmland, and wildlife habitat. Currently, the citizens of Delta City of Terraceea are dealing with extensive flooding problems, and the current Wilkinson Solar facility could seriously exacerbate their situation. No project, including Wilkinson Solar, should be allowed to continue until all private citizens and/or surrounding communities are free of any adverse effects by such a facility. Thank you.
Diane Van Stalden.
I'm here to request protection for the citizens of Beaufort County and to ask you to move forward with at least a two-year moratorium. I would really respectfully request a permanent moratorium on solar projects in our county. As a former hog farm owner, I am painfully aware that this body was the first county in our state to enact a moratorium in the mid-'90s that impacted my family's livelihood in a negative way. So I don't ask for this moratorium lightly. I fully understand the ramifications of what can happen. But I also recall the reasoning given by this body for that moratorium, and it was for the greater good and protection of the citizens of this county. Over the last several months, I have been told personally that this ruling body does not want to get involved, and I was challenged that neither would I want to get involved in individual landowners' rights and telling them what they can or cannot do with their land. I do want to remind you that you've already been involved in that years ago because my land ended up being taken away from me. The state later enacted their own moratorium, but you, as a county, were first. I'm asking you today to use the same mindset of protecting the citizens of this county with a permanent moratorium, like I understand at least one of our neighboring counties has already done. If you find a truly valid reason to refuse a permanent moratorium, then I plead with you to immediately revise our current ordinance with much better setbacks. A minimum of 2,500 feet, but a mile and a half sounds a whole lot better to me, from churches and schools, whether they are private or public, and other places where groups of citizens gather together with their families and friends. Setbacks of at least 1,500 feet for homeowners are needed to protect their rights as well. Beaufort County history shows us that you have done this type of protection before, and I respectfully request that you protect us this way again. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Beasley.
Good evening. I am speaking today to remind you that all parents and citizens should be able to go to bed at night with the comfort that their children and community, along with their life investments, are safe from solar projects, substations, and other potentially harmful entities. Protect the citizens of Beaufort County by enacting a two-year or permanent solar moratorium or at the very least revising the current ordinance to mandate a minimum of 1,500 feet of setbacks from homeowners' property or a mile to a mile and a half from schools and churches. I also believe that tax money should not be spent to clean up these projects later on. So move now to protect our citizens from that as well. Four and a half years ago, this was being fought for the solar farm in Bath, and Bee Latham wrote in her letter, "If we aren't careful, something we did not ask for could potentially change our lives forever." Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanne Van Stalden.
Good evening. I'm here to remind you of your obligation and your duty to protect your county. We've appeared before you with information showing that solar energy is not as clean and renewable and efficient as solar companies like to claim. We've brought to your attention that solar factories could turn our county into a toxic waste dump. We've talked to you about the economics of it and have done the math for you. In no way, shape, or form are solar factories going to be the boost to our economy as promised by solar companies. They have come in like wolves in sheep's clothing, making great promises of jobs and money, but they haven't been honest or upfront with us. They've snuck in and only contacted us when pushed into a corner and then made claims of wanting to be good neighbors. They have shown us that they are not to be trusted. You were elected to protect your county, and we are depending on you for your protection and your active participation. We need a two-year moratorium, if not a permanent moratorium, and we need solar ordinances, better solar ordinances put in place as soon as possible. There is no time to waste, and we just ask that you please act now. The burden of protecting this county rests on your shoulders. Thank you.
April Montgomery.
I'm here to read a statement on behalf of Wilkinson Solar. I want to be clear that this is not a joint statement, but just from Wilkinson Solar itself. After extensive discussions conducted in good faith, we are pleased to report that representatives of Wilkinson Solar, Terraceea Christian School, and Concerned Residents have reached an agreement and have withdrawn their objections to the Wilkinson Solar project. Wilkinson Solar LLC, the company developing this project, will be revising its plan for locating certain components of the project. It is the hope and expectation of all parties that these changes to the project will address any concerns that may otherwise arise. This clears a path for the project to move forward, creating jobs and new tax revenue for the community in the years ahead, as well as megawatts of clean energy. It is a win for the residents of the county and the state of North Carolina. Much work remains to be done between where we stand today and construction of the Wilkinson Solar project. We look forward to continuing to work with our neighbors in the Terraceea community and the residents and leadership of Beaufort County to that end. It is our hope that this agreement will serve to illustrate that clean energy development can not only coexist with communities like this one, but also provide a benefit to the locality and the region as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. And item number F, the approval of the items for consent.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
I have an item I'd like to remove.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson.
The purchase order. I like to talk about this purchase order carry forward, item number seven.
Okay, number seven.
Number seven.
So we'll move that down to item number 18.
Good God.
Under discussion.
Eighteen.
Anything else? Any other? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Well, I had a motion.
I'll give you a second.
Got a second by Commissioner Langley. All those in favor of the change in the consent items or approval, raise your right hand.
In favor of just the change, is there going to be a vote on the consent agenda after this?
No, we're pulling that out.
And I'm voting against it.
Well, we don't have to vote on pulling that. That's your...
Oh, okay.
That's automatic.
Oh, you said "as changed." Okay, I got you. All right, that's fine.
But you're still...
I'm voting no.
You're still voting no?
I never vote for the consent agenda.
All right. Second one.
There's too much stuff hidden in there.
Okay, we're down to item number G, items for discussion.
Got a vote for it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We did.
We did vote.
We did.
Vote was six, one.
Okay.
Down to item number G, items for discussion. I guess the three minutes was up. Okay, Bobby?
I'm here.
You're up. Nonprofit solid waste accounts included in the 2017 tax bill and update.
I think Mr. Richardson asked for the ones that did not get attempted while they visited it, how many we had. And I just got this package put together this afternoon because I've just got it in last day. So I got what you're asking for. Would you like me to pass that out?
Yeah, oh yeah. There's two lists. There's one list of those who are being built, and there should be a list of those who are not being...
I think we got those last week.
Huh? 450? I don't think so.
We don't know that many. We got 100.
Will you get us within the next few days, the list of those who are not being built?
That is...
I can't read this.
What is?
Ones that have and ones that have.
Ones that are not. Okay, that's fine. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How do we take this list and tell who's not being built?
The ones that have got the number by 145 RPA field, the some that are nonprofits like Beaufort County, the ones that have got a dumpster did not get built.
Right.
So we've been pretty much manually this whole list here.
Okay.
I think it's a couple of weeks to do that.
The ones that have money beside them of the $145, $45 fee?
There's a total on the money at the end.
Okay.
182759 or something like that.
That's all I wanted.
That's what you... I would like to say the bills went out.
Yes, they did.
We gave approval for them to go out last Friday at 2:59, I believe, and Farragut was working over the weekend. The production was working on Saturday, and I think came out yesterday. The bills were in the mail this morning. We got some on back today and...
Didn't get mine back.
We'll find yours tomorrow then.
I got it. Mr. Chairman, I have a question of the tax assessor.
Yes, sir.
Why is Farragut involved in the billing?
Farragut does the data. We put all the data into Farragut, the Farragut system. They run the data for us, and we send it to South Data, and South Data does the billing.
But I thought when we went into this, we were eliminating consultants and that we were going to have a system that all we had to do, we could send it to anybody we wanted to, to do the actual mailing.
We could. I mean, South Data's always done it for...
I know, but is Farragut going to be involved in the billing of this every year?
Every year.
And we're going to be paying them a fee?
Part of our maintenance cost.
We pay them a fee every year, $55,000 for maintenance and...
And that is included in this?
Yep.
We're not paying them anything extra?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Farragut's been very good for getting things out like this in the last minute, so... This is all I have at this time.
Does anyone have any other questions? Thank you, Bonnie.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item number two is the address reassignments. Seth?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Just got an informational item for y'all today in anticipation maybe of getting some calls here from constituents in the coming weeks. In the absence of having a full-time planner over the last several years, our Land Records Division has identified all sorts of different issues related to addressing around the county. And I've detailed examples of these in your report for this evening, of everything with addresses that are out of sequence or odds and evens on the wrong sides of the road. Road names were changed and segments were left off by themselves in some places, all the way to roads splitting off in a Y with keeping the same road names. So we've got a lot of different things that we need to correct around the county that are to bring these situations into compliance with our adopted addressing ordinance. Just wanted to make y'all aware, this is a project that we're going to be starting on here pretty soon. Do y'all have any sorts of questions for me? I've got an example of the letter that we'll be sending out, and we'll include maps to go along with that with the individual parcels and try to explain as best we can to folks.
They have a P.O. box, so there's no change, but...
That's correct. That's correct. It's not related to...
P.O. box.
I'm not concerned with how or where folks get their mail, but when they call 911, we need folks to be able to get to them. And there's a lot of places in the county and the cities, municipalities for that matter, where it's a challenge.
Does anyone have...
It's a life safety issue is what we're trying to tackle here.
Does anyone have a question, Seth? No, thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three is the jail inmate population report. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I haven't done one of these in some time. Those of you know, when we started with the jail several years ago, we discovered that one of the reasons we needed a new jail, it was full of people who were living there. And I say that casually because we had a lot of people that had been in jail two years, and their date for the trial was still December the 25th. And the December the 25th is a bogus number that's put into the records so that you know that this person has not had a date set for a trial. The... Right, the present... I will say this, too. Whatever I say that may sound differently, the district attorney has done a great job of helping us empty the jail, and he has responded very well. He still has things that he's working against, but he's gotten our jail population down. That doesn't mean that it's where it should be. Presently, we have 16 people out of the 80 total inmates that we have. We have 16 people who've been in jail more than six months, and some of them are on there for some pretty minor crimes. They shouldn't be on there that long. We have one individual who's been in jail since 2014 on a murder charge. That shouldn't be. Nobody... I've heard judges say and seen judges write, nobody should ever be in jail more than a year awaiting a trial. It's unconstitutional, for one thing. Six months for these other crimes is too long, and my cutoff now is at six months. We... And the reason for these cutoffs and the reason for getting these people out of jail is we went over budget by $300,000 last year for having to store inmates out of the county. And the reason was mainly because we had people who were long-termers awaiting trial. We're not talking about somebody serving a sentence. We're talking about somebody that's waiting to be tried even the first time. So if we could get some of these, more of these people out of jail, we would still not have to send people out of county at a cost of about $50 a day to be kept in other jails. So this is costing us money, and this is why I keep working on this. In looking at the prisoners who are long-termers in jail who have not had a trial yet, I looked at who their lawyers were. And we did this before when we started getting the numbers down, and we discovered that certain lawyers seem to have a lot of people in jail, which makes you wonder, are they a good lawyer or are they a bad lawyer? And from my viewpoint, they're a bad lawyer simply because they're keeping their people in jail. One lawyer, Perez, has more prisoners of those 16 people. He has one, two, three, four, five... He has almost half of our overstock, if you will, for lack of a better word, belonged to Perez. He is their trial lawyer. What's going on here? We know that judges shop... That judges, that lawyers shop for judges, or they try to do plea bargains and play other games with the district attorney. Their client sits in jail while they're doing this. So, you know, one of the things that we need to be taking a look at, and the district attorney, and I haven't talked with him about this, but I'll be sending him an email tomorrow, he needs to look at Attorney Perez because he's holding up progress. He should not be allowed to use the jail to plea bargain or shop for judges or whatever he's doing to the benefit of his clients. You, as the taxpayers of this county, don't need to pay, be paying 50 bucks a day so he can get his clients off on an easy charge with an easy prison term. So obviously, they're guilty, or he would be pushing for a trial to get them out of jail. So this is a plea bargain deal. We still have problems with this. We're in a lot better shape than we were, and again, I will say this for the fact that we do have 16 people who've been in jail six months and longer, one of them since 2014 for murder, that the district attorney has been very cooperative with this and done what he can do. And when I'm talking to the district attorney this time by email, I'll be saying to him, are you waiting on laboratory work from Raleigh, from the state? If you are, maybe we need to talk about the county paying for some of this laboratory work because we will save money if we get people out of jail. The state labs are notorious for taking forever to do certain things, although if you telephone them, and I have done this, they'll say, "Oh, yeah, Mr. Richardson, you just tell us which cases you want moved in. We'll put them up front and we'll get it out." So that all sounds good, but I'm more concerned about their routine of how they go about keeping everybody up. We're hoping that we don't get into a $300,000 overstock, a $300,000 overbudget again this year. I don't think we will. I've spoken with the chief deputy, and he seems like he's on top of this. So it's just a matter of all of us pushing to get people tried. If justice is swift and sure, I think we'll have less criminality. But if you can go commit a crime, and some of these guys do this, so they can lay around the jail for a while, get good food, because we do feed them good food, and have a place to stay. We need to look at all of this in order to get our jail emptied out and get, so that we're not storing prisoners out of county. And that's just a report of jail conditions. I just got one thing.
Yes, Commissioner?
Commissioner Richardson. Have you ever eaten the jail food? I see the people delivering it over there, and I, there's not much of it thrown away. Go look in the dumpster, and you don't see it thrown away. Somebody's eating it. Some people eat because they have to. Well, you know, some people are only looking for an existence, and that's fine if that's all they're looking for.
Charlie, I think you can answer it sitting right there, but there's several in here that the next court date is on Christmas of 2018. Is that just a target date?
No.
There has to be a date in the system for these people, and if they're not calendar and scheduled, then they put it on the Christmas date.
Okay.
So if you see it, then you can know that that's not...
That it's not really a scheduled date.
You know, there's nobody that's set a date, which really means that their lawyer needs to be getting on the ball and getting a date set for a trial because it's necessary for the DA and the lawyer to work together somewhat on this because if the lawyer keeps insisting that he's not ready for trial, well, the DA is reluctant to try the case because then there's going to be a problem with that conviction. But by the same token, the DA can push the thing with reasonableness. 90 days is plenty of time for you to have a drug charge taken care of in court. So it's... And the judge gets involved in this, too. So it's a matter of pushing for these trial dates.
Okay, Commissioner Buzzio.
I have a question for Chief Deputy. You may want to go. Could you describe how the dates set and how they, you know, reset it, reschedule between the lawyer and the judge involved in it?
I can talk about some of the mechanics of it.
Mechanics, yeah.
If it's a district court case, something that's a misdemeanor or a felony before it gets to the point where it sends superior court, then they're usually scheduled about monthly, where you'll have a case that'll come up about every 30 days or so. Sometimes it might get extended out a little bit more if it's a DWI and they're waiting for blood work. If it's a superior court case or a felony, then it may be, just depending on what the charge is, it might be... charge is, it might be six months or nine months is probably the low end, the short end before something gets calendared or scheduled. Or if it's something like a homicide or an A, B, or C felony, then, then it's going to be, it's going to take a long time for that to get through the process and get calendered. That, that schedule is going to be set up by the district attorney's office with guidance of the judge that's going to be presiding over that week.
Okay, so, does the lawyer have much to say about the scheduling?
I would say that between the district attorney's office, the judges, and then defense counsel, yes. I'd say the conversation will be between those three parties on when it's going to be scheduled or not.
Like sex offenses, do they, how long do they usually go on? I know it's hard to...
Yeah, um, you know, it just depends. I mean, there, there are some, a lot of that is going to be based on the evidence that's going to be involved in the case. If you've got a lot of forensic evidence that you have to wait on, if you've got DNA evidence that you have to wait on, that could wait a while. But a lot of times, sex offenses may be just by interviews. There might not be any physical evidence at all. So it's really hard to say or pinpoint how long any particular case is going to take to be scheduled.
Last question, DNA evidence. What's the, is there an average time it takes to test for DNA?
It's hard to say. I mean, and I say that just because it's so inconsistent, the information and the stuff that you get back from the state lab. And that's the same thing on drug cases or blood cases. You know, blood at one time was taken about 18 months before, since the time that they get it to the time that we get it back. And then sometimes you might get it in three or four weeks. It's almost like whatever the lab is working on right then, whether it's Vance County or Henderson County or Mecklenburg County or Beaufort County, that's what they grab, they get it out and they get the stuff out. So a lot of times, there's no rhyme or reason with the information that we're getting back and when we're going to get it back. And I know that, you know, we've got 100 counties, and I think that there's probably calls from each county at any given week to the lab wanting to know, rush this and rush that. And I think the standard answer is, yeah, we'll put it right at the front of the line, along with everything else that's at the front of the line as well.
Now, because of the Fentanyl problem, and where it can kill, or one of our police officers, do we, do we still use the test kits, the patrol officers use the test kits, or everything goes in the lab now?
We do very few roadside tests at this time on anything.
Because of the Fentanyl?
So there's, well, because of a lot of things, but that's, that's the main driver of that. A lot of the things that we're doing now is that we'll collect the evidence, we'll have a charge, but then we'll come back and indict on whatever charges that we need to after the tests come back.
Okay.
So, but we are changing the way that we're doing things just because of the, the stuff that's out there right now.
Thanks, Chief Deputy.
Any other questions?
I talked to the DA, I didn't email him, but I asked him, is there anything that the commissioners can do to help him, you know, free trial or whatever? And he says he's going to give us some ideas, let him think about it, but we appreciated everything he was doing, but is anything that we could do for him, helping the jail situation and moving, you know, people through the court system?
I think, you know, it's not going to be perfect, no matter what we do. I mean, we've got to jail people that are within our society, so there's never going to be an easy answer. And, you know, quite frankly, there's a lot of things that we've got going on in Beaufort County that are really good things. I mean, we're very fortunate and lucky in a lot of ways to live in the area that we do. But we are going to need a jail, and we are at the point now where we've got to figure out ways to keep that number down. Because we do, at times, we need a lot more capacity than what we have, you know. So, but as far as things that the district attorney can do, I think that he, I think that his office does a lot to try to, to try to keep that docket or the jail cases as small as we can. But that's only a small portion of the cases that he actually has. I mean, if we've got 60 jail cases, they might have 5,000 cases that are waiting to be disposed of in one way, shape, or form. So the jail cases are actually just a very small percentage of what's actually on the books ready to get tried or disposed of in some way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Item number four is the estuary and lease agreement. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In front of you, you have a, and this is for an item for discussion, it's a proposed renewal lease agreement between the Partnership for the Sands Incorporated, which runs the estuary, or owns the estuary, and the city of Washington and the county. The city and the county are joint landlords on that property. The material terms of this lease, there's currently a lease, the material terms of this renewal lease are the same except for the request by the estuary to not carry flood insurance. That, the executive director reports that the facility's never had water in it due to its existing elevation, and based on that history, they also want insurance. They've requested that requirement be removed. The, the term of the lease is for 10 years, and the city and the county accept as payment of that, in the payment of those terms, the estuarium's services in providing that, that, that service and maintaining that building and looking after for the term of the lease. So this is for your consideration, it'll be, we've got a public notice on it, so we'll have to bring it back to you. But any questions you have, we'd be glad to answer them. The lease was drafted by the city attorney, it's been reviewed by the county attorney, and then we'd recommend your approval moving forward. Have any other questions?
Commissioner Brian?
Why do they not want flood insurance?
Cost. They are, they are operating on a pretty strict budget. They've had a lot of cuts over the years, and they are on a shoestring budget, and they're trying to cut as many costs as they can to maintain the, the operation of that facility. Like, say, the executive directors reported they've never had water in the building, and they think it's something that they could do without.
In addition to, in addition to the cost for the flood insurance, the building is built in such a way that I don't know what it would take to do damage to it. It's, it's a, it's a low-risk structure. It's a steel frame and concrete structure with concrete lower portion. It will take, it will take heavy wave action. It's not like a residential dwelling at all. It's built, it's built to a commercial or a government grade of building, which is a higher level than even a commercial building. So the possibility of damage is very low. I don't have a problem relieving them of that. The other, another reason for relieving them of that is, we don't have them yet. We were told we would have them by now, which the commissioners have to prove, and that is the new flood maps from FEMA. They should be coming shortly. They're working down in Onslow County, Craven County, they're moving this way, we'll probably be next. And within those maps, because we passed the year 2013, and 1913 was the year of the great flood, that they rode boats right around here, they've got photographs of it during the 1913 flood event, and we passed, that was called the 100-year flood event. That's not a 100-year flood event anymore according to the way they do this. So when you pull that out of the FEMA maps, you're going to have some drops in flood levels of two and three feet in some places. So your flood level over there may drop as much as three feet. And that lowers the risk even more based upon the flood maps and, and what's going on. I don't think it's a high risk myself.
I guess, just wanted to know.
Well, I, I think that the way the building is built with the concrete and the steel, even if you have water inside the building, it's, it's going to go out pretty quick, hopefully.
Well, it's built about, I, I don't want to get on the hook here because I did the, I did the elevations when that thing was built. My memory is it's two or three feet above the floor, above the base flood elevation. So there's, there's very little risk of water ever getting in the building. And then there's very little risk because of the superstructure underneath the building of that being damaged by rising water in particular, or even wave action.
Commissioner Bazia?
Who's required, who required flood insurance?
It was a requirement under the lease which was originally done by the city and the county.
Is any, or is the building paid for and for?
Yes. And my understanding is the city...
What does the city have to say about it?
My understanding is they're okay with it.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, way over today, I was listening to the radio, and they were talking about areas down in Texas that never had a flood. And down to have floods and houses are under water. And I think a half million cars too. So my question is, is, you know, something can always happen, but if it does happen, who's on the hook for it?
The estuary, the Partnership for the Sands. I mean, I, essentially, the way that lease is written, I mean, if it were completely, any, any repairs they're responsible for, so...
But to say we may never have a flood?
My understanding is, if it gets high enough that you've got water in that building, you've got a lot of issues, you've got a whole lot of issues in Washington.
Oh, yeah.
But, but I never said you'd never have a flood. What I said was, it's a very low risk. It, it's not like in this building where you've got sheet rock, and it gets wet, and you've got insulation, you've got to pull it all out and, and let it dry.
I, I think they're comfortable with it. The sad part about it is that they've been cut so much in their state funding that they are struggling to try to minimize all their expenditures, and this is one of those.
Okay, any other questions on the lease? If not, item number five, report on the conversation regarding after our courthouse security. Brian?
Yes, sir. Members of the board, at the request of this board, the action that it took at the last meeting, on Thursday, August the 24th, the chairman, the county attorney, and myself met with the chief resident Superior Court Judge, the district attorney, and the clerk of court to discuss the after-hours security order that, that the chief resident Superior Court Judge and the chief district court judge put in place. We relayed to the individuals that were there, the board's concern regarding the cost of after-hours, and the number of people. The judge was quick to point out that he didn't require a specific number of people, he just said that security had to be maintained. It was, and because of the layout of the courthouse where you have the elevator, so for handicap accessibility, if you have, if you need access for handicap accessibility, then you've got to have somebody downstairs in the basement because that's the only access to the elevator. So you have to have somebody at the, at the entrances on the, on the first floor as well. His comment and, and the over, the general, the general comments for both the DA and the clerk, and the, the judge were that security was needed in that courthouse. The board had agreed that security was needed in that courthouse. And if it's needed from eight to five, it's needed from around the clock to make sure that you're able to maintain that security. And that was essentially his position, and that were their position, that you judge's position. And that they believed that they were within their bounds based on the statutes and their administrative authority that they have through the administrative office of the courts to ensure the security of their offices and their, and the court, and the courtroom, that they felt like they were, they were on solid, on solid footing with that. So I'll be glad to let either the county attorney elaborate, or Mr. Chairman, you may elaborate.
I, I mean, let me elaborate. What, what the board voted for, and I didn't vote for it because every time I go in the courthouse, I feel like a criminal. Because you have to go through security, and that says, gee, everybody comes through here, must be a criminal, so you got to go through security. But what the board voted to do when they provided that was to provide security from like eight in the morning until five o'clock at night while court was in session. And what's going on here is the, the judges are taking this and stretching it into something that it never was. And I, I fail to understand why, if the Democrat Party is having a convention or a meeting in the courthouse, or the Republican Party's having a convention or a meeting, or we, there's a, there's some teen courts that take place over there, or the local gardening club, or the quilting club is using the courthouse for a meeting, which they can do under the law, why is it necessary to have security for these events? The judges are correct, I agree with the, I'll put it this way, I agree with the judges to the extent while court is going on, that it's up to them to provide security and to see to it that they have security for their court, for the courtroom, all that sort of thing. The commissioners voted to do that. We have provided that security. And I'll have a motion at the proper place in the rest of this meeting of what we need to be doing about this. Because if you look at what's been going on in the courthouse, you know, you have this judicial stretch, and Beaufort County is not exempt from it. And that is, first, you can't take a cellphone, can't have a cellphone in the courtroom. There's no law that says that. There are plenty of courtrooms that the whole court proceedings are filmed, and anybody can come and get them and look at them if they want to. So what have you got to hide? It's the only reason I can think somebody wouldn't, a judge wouldn't want to know what's going on in his courtroom. What are you doing that's not legal? Judges do things like that. Things happen. So we've got to stretch with that, and there've been some citizens of Beaufort County who have been grossly embarrassed for their treatment that they have received from judges because they accidentally found out that they had a cellphone that they didn't even think they were supposed to have that was turned off. This should, this, this kind of stuff should not be going on. With the judiciary, they have discovered a niche, and if you let them keep running, they're going to keep running. So we went and we put security in for the jail when the sheriff was already providing adequate security up on the second floor by checking most of the people that went into the courtroom. Okay? And most judges are packing anyway. Okay, so let's, let's get real, there's more guns in the courthouse than there is anywhere else in the county. People don't attack judges in courthouses. They attack them in parking lots, and in driveways, and at home, and a whole lot of other places. So why are we becoming so paranoid about this particular situation? So we've had the step now that if you're having a meeting in the courthouse at nine o'clock at night with the local knitting club, they have to have security. Where is it going to go from here? This will keep going. If you don't do something about this now, it will keep going.
During, during our meeting, I asked, how did we come up with three deputies? Because of the fact it's a public building, we have to have one that operates the, down in the basement, the elevator, so that handicapped people are available to go up, or it's available to go up. Then we'd have one at the front door, and then there would be one in the meeting room The, the concern that the, that the judge has is making sure that the courtroom is prepared and ready for court the next meeting after a meeting. Which means that if there is no security, somebody's going to have to go in and sweep that courtroom the next morning. And actually, sweep the whole building because once you get inside the building without any security, you know, all you got to do is get on the elevator, walk up and down the steps. So I understand the concern that they have. I think, I think one of the things that we need to consider is that there are other places in the county where people with small groups can go to have a meeting, where it's user-friendly for people with disabilities, it's user-friendly as it relates to getting in and out of a small group and only occupying a small part of the building. So there are some other alternatives. It's not that this is the only place that they can meet. The other thing that we keep in mind is that as we move into the First Bank Building, we'll have a public meeting facility there that'll hold 93 or 96 people, which would also provide another option. In, in the state statute 15A-1034, the presiding judge may impose reasonable limitations on access to the courtroom when necessary, necessary to ensure the ordinance of courtroom proceedings or the safety of persons present. So he does have the authority to do that. I realize the question says "may," but there's a cost, if, if a group goes anywhere else in the county, there's a cost. Even if you go to a local community or a Rurten building, you got to pay some money. If you go to the school, there's a cost, you know, an hourly rate there. And I think that we've already imposed a cost for deputy sheriffs being there on the scene where it was requested that we have security in the past.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
God knows we're going to have places where they can meet at, but if we got people in Beaufort County that dangerous, we need to supply security at First Bank, need to supply it in here, and wherever those 30 people or 60 people meeting at. I, I just don't believe that we are that terrible in this county. I just don't believe it.
Well, I, I think, I think citizens believe that the courthouse should be the safest building in the county as it relates to, you know, something that happened. And I think, you know, as commissioners, we have a fiduciary responsibility to protect the safety.
That's right. That's why, that's why at the meeting in the First South Building, we should have the same security that the judge think you need in the courtroom.
Yes, Commissioner Lang.
Okay, well, a couple of things. First of all, now, I've been out of the courthouse now since September, but I can honestly say this, I, I have... now since September, but I can honestly say this. I have seen deputies go into the courtroom and sweep the courtroom and check everything in the courtroom. So that is really not a valid reason. I mean, if deputies do their job, then that is already taken care of. What we have to understand is, and this statute that you read pretty much talked about when court is in session, that's what this pertaining to. I mean, once court is over with, let's just say if they're having a murder trial in Superior Court, at the end of the day, that courtroom is locked, all the evidence is locked up, and nobody can actually go into that courtroom. And certainly, you would not have a meeting in a courtroom where there's a murder trial going on. And most time in district court, many days district court, most time two, three o'clock in the day, district court is over. So I just find it unnecessary that you would have to have deputies or any type of security after five o'clock. It's just not true. It's just like with the elevator. If you, I'll go back a number of years. We've always had things in the courthouse on Saturdays. And basically, what would happen is someone would simply unlock the elevator and allow people to go up and down. And when the event is over with, the elevator is locked again. Now, as far as the courtrooms, like I stated earlier, the courtrooms are locked. So if they're in the district courtroom, they're not going into the Superior courtroom. And as far as the judges' chambers are concerned, they're secured. People cannot get into the judges' chambers. We're doing overkill here. There's no reason to do what they're proposing right now. It's just, it is just strictly overkill, and I'm simply not for it. I've been a criminal justice professional for 34 years. I have been in and out of that courthouse, and this is straight up overkill.
Commissioner Bozzi.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, does our county attorney have anything to add for the meeting?
What?
Do you have anything to add on the meeting that was held?
No.
Okay. Let me talk about security for a little while, for a few minutes. Security systems, when you build them or you install them, prevent, the first thing you want to do is prevent unauthorized access from the outside. Then you include also, as part of that, access to those employees that work in that facility. So what you're looking at first is the access and the perimeter of the security. Then when you get to the inside of the building, you're looking for security so that somebody can't do something that they're not supposed to do, whether they're an employee of the facility or a guest of the facility. So in security, you've got physical security, access controls, electronic security, and then security that you provide through persons, whether it's a guard like we have, or deputy sheriff, whatever it is. But security systems are installed to prevent something from happening. It's not after the fact you install security after something happens. In today's world that we live in, and for years it's been this way, security systems are preventative programs to prevent somebody from doing something they're not supposed to do, whether it's stealing something, or bringing a bomb in there, or going in there to cause problems, whether it's in the rest area, the restroom, or the courtroom. It's not only the, to say, it's not, you can't just say it's never going to happen in a particular county. And the other thing is, when I read this legislation, this regulation, I read it as when necessary to ensure the ordinance of the courtroom proceedings. It could either be the night before, the day before, so that when you have court proceedings, the next day, the judge is sure that that courtroom is safe for, whether it's for the defendants, the judge, the lawyers present, or any other persons that may be in the courtroom. This is not an easy issue. But again, you've got to look at, what are we trying to prevent here? We're trying to prevent something from happening, and then after the fact saying, why didn't we do something? Thank you.
Any other comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
Just as a footnote, and as a citizen, I forget the commissioner for me. I hate the courthouse. I don't like going in there. There's a lot of things going on. There's so many good buildings around in this area, that we like to get out in. I mean, there's just a lot of places to have these meetings. Why are we harping on the courthouse? I mean, I don't, I just, I hate climbing those stairs or the elevator. I mean, it's just why, it's our building, but the air conditioner costs, the wear and tear, the upkeep, the bathrooms, there's so many other facilities. Why is this even a conversation? And we're under court order not to do it, so why don't we just move on?
Mr. Chairman, let me address that.
Yes?
State law says that any public building that is not being used for the purpose and function that it was originally set out for is available to be used by the public. It doesn't say, if we don't want you to use the courthouse, we can push you off somewhere else. It says any public building. That is something the legislature gave to the people of North Carolina to keep bureaucrats from keeping buildings under control and keeping them locked up so you couldn't have access to them. So, you know, arguing, saying that, oh gee, because there's an issue at the courthouse, we ought to go somewhere else, that's letting the bad guys win. You don't need to do this. You don't need to give up the rights that you have. These judges will keep pushing, and they will keep taking this as long as you let them. They started it. They didn't have any right to ban electronic items from the courtroom, and they started that. And then they moved on to this, and they're going to move on to something else just as soon as this is over with. So where does it stop?
One more comment. The security system does work. When I went over there the other day, I had to take this back to the car. I said, don't you have a place behind you you can keep this thing? And he said, no, you've got to take it back to the car. So, and the guy didn't know I was chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Otherwise, he might have taken, held on to it. I don't know. But don't, don't take your knife over there.
You were a criminal while you were standing there with that knife.
Okay, we're down to items H, items for decision. The first one is Hunger Action Month proclamation, Anne Marie. Sure do.
Good evening, gentlemen. September is Hunger Action Month, and we're asking the county commissioners to approve a proclamation to proclaim September Hunger Action Month. The proclamation that we proposed reads as follows. Whereas September is National Hunger Action Month, and Beaufort County, North Carolina desires to help make its citizens aware of hunger in our own county, and whereas we live in a tier-one designated county with limited opportunities and neighbors and children who need our help, and whereas we desire each citizen to not only be aware of hunger issues in our area, but to make them aware of the many ways in which they can contribute to helping alleviate hunger issues, now therefore be it resolved that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners declare this month of September in the year of 2017 to be known as Hunger Action Month, and encourage our citizens to become involved in addressing this vital issue. And we ask you to adopt that this evening.
Excuse me. Got a motion by Commissioner Booth, and a second by Commissioner Bren. All those in favor of the proclamation, raise your right hand. You've had them. Thank you. Thanks for hanging around. Okay, item number two is penalties and interest appeal on tax bill, Robbie Taylor.
Good evening. The reason I'm here today is because we received, I've owned property here for the last, a little over the last decade, and I paid my taxes on time every time, and had just a glitch in the system where it was a data punch entry. And I will say this, there were some people in the county government that were extremely helpful, and there were some that were less. And that's something that probably should be addressed at some point because we all should be treated with respect and dignity when we have a problem, and we should have people who try to help us through it. With that said, I would like to, never met him directly until tonight, but Mr. Parker was extremely helpful. He recognized their mistake that they made on my bill, and I didn't receive for six or seven months, and just was absolutely outstanding. And David Harris in the collector's office, he was the only one that actually stopped after multiple attempts to try and pay my bill, with others telling me that there was, they had no obligation to do anything other than for me to pay a penalty, to let me know this appeal process and how to walk through it. With that said, I paid the penalty. I've tried to pay it multiple times. I did not receive the bill and paid it. Went in to pay it and asked that I pay my taxes because I wanted to protest the penalties and have some kind of resolution. They took my check, put it in, and applied it to the penalties and interest first, and then underpaid my taxes. So I said, no, we're not going to do this today. And that was a kind of a contentious portion. That was a part with an employee that was less than what I would call a public servant, and had some challenges. The bottom line is, is that I paid my bills on time. I tried to pay it multiple times, and I have since paid it and paid the penalties pursuant to the policy in place. And I ask that you would refund me. I've got copies if you need them, but it's $199.87 that I feel I was unjustly charged, as well as had my name publicly recorded as not paying my bill, when in fact I didn't receive it through a clerical error. And I don't know if Mr. Parker would, if he remembers it or not, or would acknowledge that, but I do have all my notes and everything. It just seems very, very unfair, and it was a difficult process that did not have to be. So respectfully, I would ask you for that.
Yes, Commissioner.
Do you have, do you have two places of residence?
Yeah, I have two tax, actually, I have three tax bills, of which this year, thank you, Mr. Parker, they all three came in today. So I have them for next year, and they had the address right. But one of them did not come through, and it was through a fluke kind of thing. We just didn't, it didn't make it through, and we didn't know we owed the taxes.
So your tax bill that this penalty and interest is on was sent to the wrong address?
That is correct. It was sent to the wrong address multiple times, and had it not been for the courtesy of a neighbor at my business address, which is where all my tax bills go, found it and brought it to me when it was actually, let me see what they put on here, because it's not, it's not, the tax final warning, not a pleasant surprise.
Well, the way I understand it is that we don't have to send you a bill for your taxes. And it's your obligation to pay the taxes, and if there's any penalty and interest. Am I right by that saying that, Mr. Parker?
May I respond to that?
Sure.
In checking through this, I would agree with you 1,000%. That is a North Carolina statute. However, once you undertake to send a bill, then the taxpayer or citizen has the right to rely upon it being done properly. And you're exactly right. The commissioners could say, hey, we're never going to send a bill again. I doubt that the tax collector would have a very good January. Nobody would pay. We all need reminders, and we do that. So once you undertake to do that, you have a fiduciary obligation to do it properly. And it was a simple keystroke error. It was one digit off, and it never made it. And I'd be a whole lot less passionate about this if I had been treated with a little bit of respect, a little bit of courtesy, a little bit of understanding. But it wasn't. And I really think it's one of those things that had I not paid you since 2004 every year, right on time, every time, with every bill, and this one, the only reason I didn't get it, and the only reason I didn't know about it, to be honest, was it changed from being an escrow account to being non-escrow. It had been wrong since 2004. But that bill never came to. It just never got. Now it's fixed, and as I said, thanks to the, I've got a lot bigger bill from you, Mr. Parker. Thank you.
So this is the first year that you've actually had a bill that was supposed to be mailed to you. It'd have been through an escrow account, the other?
Well, the other property that I have was not through escrow, and I did pay that every time. And I've got the copies of the bills with the wrong address on them. We've been...
Can I see?
Yes, absolutely.
I think you have it.
I'm sorry, I got it right here.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, Bobby, does the tax office admit that this is a clerical error?
This, you brought two pieces of property in 2004. It was at the wrong address on it. I don't know where it exactly came from, where it was keying in when the deed was switched, or we went back and had to check it back through the system. It's been that way. Ever since, it's been in escrow. It went to an escrow, it was still wrong. So where the error came from, it was probably, maybe it was wrong when it come off the deed or something. I can't say for sure where it happened, but it's been that way ever since. The other property was in escrow.
And we did go back and find that both online. And I mean, that's what I say, Mr. Parker, they were phenomenal. I can't say as much for...
Yes, Commissioner Bozzi.
I'd like to make a motion that we ask our county manager to look into this issue and report back to us at the next board meeting.
I'm not sure there's a whole lot I can, I mean, he's presented to you everything. We actually had a conversation on the phone. I think he's presented everything again to you. It's up to the board to make a decision. Like, I think this is the third one you've had come in front of you, to make a decision based on that statute, based on the material irregularity statute, whether you believe that there was a clerical error, that it qualifies under that. And as we talked about before, in a couple of these cases, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of case law out there relating to it. And the board is ultimately the one who makes the decision on that. So as long as you have all the information you need, and he's here to answer any of those questions, you have Mr. Parker here to answer any of those questions, you have to make that decision.
It's obvious that the address is wrong. The tax bill, that the address is wrong.
Well, this, this...
Have we done refunded penalty and interest in the past? Is this completely out of the ordinary?
I would say it's out of the ordinary, yes. I mean, we haven't done it. I mean, we have other people that come in with the wrong address, but it's, we try to help them through this, and we say, you know, you had other properties. Our hands are tied, and our hands are tied. So we do what, when it's there, we just, what the system is going to put a penalty and interest on it, I can't stop it.
But do I understand that if the, if the board determines that clerical error is sufficient, that we can relieve him of the penalties and interest?
You are the only ones who can do that.
Right.
I make a motion that we relieve the penalty and interest on Mr. Taylor's property.
Could you hold on that motion until we hear from Mr. Keaton? Interest and appeals. Because you're involved in this process too, aren't you?
Yes, sir, I am. And I'm the one that gave Mr. Taylor the advice originally on the phone call. I explained to him the board had not had this preference before. So I'm a little bit questioning, you know, a few things that are going on. I mean, the board is ultimately liable for this issue. So if you make the decision to do it, it's up to the board to do it. It's just, we've had 55,000 bills go out. We've only had three come before you. Now, I've told Mr. Taylor when I talked with him, I empathize with him. I said, I can understand the foot, you know. We want to make sure we get the information correctly to the taxpayer. The first line is, well, we don't have to send the bills out. Well, he's right. I can't collect the money if the bills don't go out. You know, so I have to look at what the board has done and communicate that to the taxpayer. You know, so I have to look at what the board has done and communicate that to the taxpayer. This board has not done this in the past. So I would recommend to the board to think about your proceeding with this, because when you do this, we're going to have them coming into the assessor's office, saying the addresses are wrong, having to deal with this probably on a more frequent basis. And I'm not saying bad for Mr. Taylor, because I understand what he's thinking, and like I said, we have empathized with him profusely, at least I have. So I'm going to leave it to the board, and that's just the only thing I can say on top of that. I know Mr. Parker said this has not ever happened before. So that's what we, that's what I have to look at on the collector's side.
Well, I've been here twenty years, it hasn't happened very often, but it has happened before.
A release.
Yeah. It hasn't happened very often, but it has happened, when it's justified.
Excuse me. You made one, one statement about we may be facing more of these, what made you make that statement?
Well, I mean, we've had three come up to the board. Okay, so I'm just saying, you know, we try to do our best due diligence to find better addresses, to do the things we can to get the information correct, but we don't know that we will or we will not. Thankfully for him, a neighbor gave him a bill that he had, but I mean, that's the way I have to look at it.
I got a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Booth.
I understand your plight here, but is this one of those cases if somebody contested that the sitting board have to repay this money? Is that one of those instances if somebody contested? Another thing here, and I don't know, I wasn't there when all this happened, but every county employee knows how I feel about treating the public. Now, I probably, knowing that the statute says if the address is not our issue, we don't have to send you, we don't have to send you a letter, if that was a motion, I probably wouldn't vote for it, but I do have concern about the... Wait a minute till I finish. But I do have concern whether you're telling the truth or whether you're not, I have concerns to hear that you were treated, or anybody was treated that way in the office of county government, and I do have a concern with that.
Well, all I can tell you is the truth. I can tell you that for a hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and this may blow it for me right here, but I wouldn't have sat through an hour of this to have my word to come up here and tell you something untrue. I felt strongly enough about it, and I feel strongly enough about what is going on with this, and with the methodology that it's being done in, because it is very much a black and white case for Brian, for David. These guys, they can only say what the law says they can say.
I got you.
And it is a protectionist, it is a position that the state legislature has put them in, that they have no wiggle room. And maybe the right answer would be tell Robbie to get out.
No.
And take the next thing and say, maybe what we should talk about is giving them a method or a means to do the right thing, rather than having to do what their rules say. I can tell you that the process and the procedure was broken, the process and procedure amongst the employees that you talked about, some found a way to talk about it in a different method. Now, that can be whatever, whatever you want to call it, to me, it was a lack of respect of where I was, because I was writing my check, and they were taking it. I think that, you know, again, just a little bit of decorum, a little bit of respect, a little bit of a nicer way of doing things would go a long way. I will say that from a legal perspective, based upon some people who have looked at it, you're, you are, you're treading on some really shaky ground either way you go, because once you set the precedent, now he's worried.
That's right.
"Oh, my goodness, everybody's going to say that." Well, you know what, you can look at this, it's black and white, it says, if it says the wrong address, it says the wrong address. If I hadn't paid my taxes for the last twenty years and I was up here and I owed you for all of it, yeah, you got a little bit of different look at it. But at this point, I spent this time because I thought it was the right thing, and I thought that y'all needed to know what goes on really, instead of what you're told, if you don't experience it from my side.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to make my motion.
Okay.
Make a motion that the county return Mr. Taylor's hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents for penalty and interest.
Second by Commissioner Buzzio. Any comments or questions before we take the vote? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. Vote's four to three.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to item number three, the Schedule of Values for 2018 revaluation.
Each one of you have a Schedule of Values presented to you. This is, this is something, it's a long process we go through, about, I think it's about six weeks before we come up to a public hearing and adopt the Schedule of Values. It gives everyone in this county the right to come into my office, I will have a book out, put one over here too, to come in and look at this manual, and read it if they would like to, most people come in, read five pages, and I don't see them anymore, so it's not the best bedtime story that you've ever read, but it's something we are required to do. If we do this tonight, I'm presenting you tomorrow, I will have to advertise that we will, the Schedule of Values is in my office, and you can come in and review it. We go through this for the next four, four weeks, I believe it is, and it gives, if someone wants to appeal a value in there, or something, that's all that we're doing, they can appeal it to the Property Tax Commission, and they have to, October 28th, that will be the last day, they can appeal to the Property Tax Commission. We've never had anyone to appeal to the Property Tax Commission, this is my fourth time. I hate to say it, but we've never had anyone to come into the public hearing, we said, we advertised as a public hearing, and we sat here probably an hour. Mr. Richardson, you've been here all these times, Mr. Langley, you've been here, we sat here, Mr. Booth, you have too, we sat here for an hour and nobody comes in, nobody says anything about it, so this is what we're doing tonight, is just presenting this to you, and I'll put the books out and let some money come in and read them, if they've got a question, they can ask me, help them get through it, and I have, I'll have a lot of people to come in for a stand to get through it, so glad to help them.
Will this be online on the county's website?
We can put it online, sir.
Any, any questions of Bobby? And our public hearing will be at the next meeting?
Public hearing, I think will be, it's the, the earliest date that we can adopt it will be the 28th of September, so we will be at the next meeting probably. If we can get through all the advertisements, that's...
If there's no questions of Bobby?
Is that, excuse me, is that date set in stone?
Sure.
September 28th, you said, right?
No, it's not set in stone, we got to do some advertising of what date, if I miss a date. But that's the earliest.
Yeah, we're not going to meet that date, as I understand.
No, we are. We have plenty of time to do it, so just want to give the public the opportunity if they want to appeal it to the Property Tax Commission.
Thank you, Bobby.
Sir.
And to item number four, the Reclassification of Position, Chief Deputy Ray.
Chairman and Commissioners, I've got information that you should have in front of you in reference to one of our positions that we're looking to reclassify. If I may, I'm not going to look to try to read all of the information that you have, there's a ton of stuff there, but I did want to give, I guess, a brief summary of where we've been over the last couple of decades that has led us to this, just in thirty or forty-five seconds if I could. The computer systems that we've had at the sheriff's office, the detention center, the administrative office, and in, in the enforcement section, has been run by a sworn law enforcement officer for at least the last two decades. That's been a cop that knows a little bit about computers. Well, over that time and getting into the point where we are now is that the systems that we have are getting more complex, getting to the point where, you know, we've got to have somebody who knows the ones and zeros that are maintaining these systems, so now we need a computer guy that knows a little bit about cop work instead of what we've had in the past. The person that was in the position or has been in the position for about the past five years has done an absolutely great, fantastic job at the sheriff's office, but he was recruited away from our office to go working in another IT field where, where he's going to end up making a lot more money than I could even try to counter offer with, with the limits and the ranges that we have now. So the information that you have before you, there's a brief synopsis of all of the systems that that individual runs, a lot of those things, there's hands-on on a daily basis, and, and I can, I can attest that, you know, we've got one person at the sheriff's office that maintains these systems, and that we try to, we try to get that person some time off, some downtime, I mean, just, just like with my job, they're on call twenty-four seven, so on those weeks or whatever that he's out of town, or has been in town, then I'll take those phone calls, and it might be something from an app on the phone isn't working correctly that I tell them to read the instruction manual, till we get a call from something about a 911 server that I go into freak-out mode and start making phone calls to try to get things taken care of right away, so it's, everything from the simple to the complex that we're looking at, you have the information of where we're going to, I know there is some complexity that we're dealing with because we're trying to do the right thing when it comes to the system that we're in now, and then a possible system that we may be moving to, so we try to make that as clear as possible in the information that you have before you. But basically, we're looking to reclassify an investigator position to a technology specialist position, and we need to move the range, the salary range, from a entry-level investigator with our office to something that would be comparable to a position in a government IT position, and that, that's the information that you have before you.
Yes.
What you're proposing, that will be done within your current budget?
We can, yes, and that's through lap salary that we will have, we can make the adjustments that we can take care of any, any increase in salary for that position this year, and then just like with everything else, it's the, our people have to come first, I mean, we can't do anything when we, if we don't have a person, so the next salary or the next, the next budget year, we will adjust to the salaries accordingly, and if we need to bring some things down so we can stay flat, then we will.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
This pay grade seventy, is that comparable to other counties for doing the same work?
And I may need some help from the manager on the pay grade number itself. The current plan that we have, it would be moving from a sixteen to a twenty-five, which would be the comparable range as what it would be from a pay grade of seventy if, if the new plan was put into place, but if you were to look statewide, not at the private sector jobs, but just government technology specialist jobs or IT jobs, then the hiring rate is fifty thousand roughly to ninety thousand. We're, we're not, we can't compete with that range, but we do need to get the range to the point that we can make a hire with somebody that has the educational background and experience in computers, that, just so we can get them in the door. And, and where I'm looking on this is that for the last three years, we've been trying to get our overall organizational chart to where, what we are, what we are on paper, and, and this is one of the things that we need to do, that we probably should have done years ago, but, but, you know, we're here now, and that's, that's what we're looking for.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I understand where he's going with this, because even in my office, and I'm an old dude engineer that was dragged into modern technology, because I learned my stuff on Slide Rule, and, but we need people in my office, to give you an example, if I didn't have my tech guy who spent two years out at Beaufort Tech in the office, I wouldn't be running, you know, that, just that simple, because the technology that's out there, I could spend a lot of time giving you a story about how if you use modern technology in engineering or surveying business based upon what it was in the Slide Rule days, you're actually running in negative territory if you're looking for cost benefits, you're going, you're going in the other direction, big time. The only thing that I would like to see on this for the amount, so I understand what you need, the only thing that I would like to see on this for the amount of money that you're paying is an educational level that goes along with that. I, I think they should have a two-year degree, and I don't want to define the degree, but, you know, preferably being technology, but I think a two-year degree should go with this particular job, because it is a high-tech job, and the second argument that goes with that is I don't believe that you're going to require them to be a sworn officer.
That's correct.
So there, that, that would be the trade-off.
Motion to approve.
With the two-year degree, I can, I can second that if you...
Credentials.
Okay, I second it.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Langley, is there a second?
Can I ask one question first?
Hood, okay.
He's second.
All right.
Talking about two-year degree or two years of college education?
Two-year, well, I think a two-year, I would say a two-year degree, mainly because the community colleges are so close, it's easy to take two years in a formal and go to a community college and convert it into a degree.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Because in here, he talks about a one-year of college education.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
With the wording of that, I have no problem with that, could there be some wording in there that, and we spoke about this earlier, that two-year degree or would be willing to, to obtain?
Well, in most case, yeah, in most cases, I think the convention is, and personnel would probably tell you this, that if a person is close to obtaining that two-year degree and is working toward it, currently enrolled in classes, that they would take him on under the condition that he complete his degree. That doesn't mean he's a freshman, that means he's finished most of the coursework and he has a few things to get, and that's, that's usually, that's usually weighs by personnel departments.
Okay, I'm completely comfortable with that.
See, Brian shaking his head.
The only thing I would say to you is, under, if we list that as a minimum training and experience, and you say the minimum is a two-year degree, then you've got to have a two-year degree, or you wouldn't qualify under the minimum statute, and we wouldn't look at it. If you were to say two-year degree and/or equivalent experience, education, and training, which is a lot of what we do, there's, there's a little bit of that buzzword in a lot of our, in a lot of our...
I don't want to, but I'll go along with it.
It's a lot of that in our personnel, in our personnel descriptions.
We're still talking about a two-year level of education to make this thing work.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. We're down to seven o'clock, so we're going to take a fifteen-minute break. We're down to item number five, Budget Amendment Request for the E911 backup. Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioners. We need to do a budget amendment for the E911 fund, basically for accounting purposes for, for needed, to keep all her things in line over there, for the, all the different invoices we've got coming through for the backup system that's going to be put in Craven County. What we need is a motion to approve the appropriation of ninety-five thousand eight hundred dollars from the restricted state fund to the hardware maintenance, and I will say that these invoices have all gone to the state 911 board staff to ensure that those items are fundable, so we've got those backed, that they are fundable.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brennan, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, may I just make one correction on that motion? The amount actually is the forty-seven thousand nine hundred, not ninety-five thousand eight hundred. That's a typo.
Okay.
Now, does this mean we're going to get a check back for this amount of money from that fund?
No, we are appropriating fund balance, funds that we already have in reserves on hand.
When you say in reserves?
Cash is in the bank.
Fund balance, we're appropriating just fund balance.
Restricted fund balance, 911 restricted funds.
Restricted fund balance, 911 restricted funds. But you can't spend for anything but 911. It's the money that comes from the state.
Right. Okay, but if we have invoices that we are paying...
I had purchase orders come across my desk for these items, and I noticed that the money had not sufficiently been appropriated, so I reached out to Chief Deputy Rose and Mr. Williams, and we talked about the need to appropriate an additional forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars out of those restricted funds to cover those purchase orders before I could sign those.
But the state approves the payment of the forty-seven thousand?
The state approves the project.
The state approves that those are eligible expenditures for 911.
All right, but see, I'm having trouble moving money around. That's my problem. Who's going to write the check for forty-seven thousand?
The county's going to write the check for the forty-seven thousand. We already have the funds in the bank, they're just restricted to be spent on E-911 projects.
Oh, okay, so we've drawn down the funds from the state?
They send us funds monthly.
Right, okay, it's in a fund that is already funded, and it's going to come out of the 911 Fund, but the state has to approve them under that legislation they did three or four years ago.
The state approves that the expenditures are eligible for 911 funds, so that, they say, yes, you can use these for 911.
Right, okay, so we've got the money, we're drawing it out of our own restricted fund, not coming from them or anything like that. In other words, they give us a credit?
In a nutshell, Commissioner Richardson, we get your surcharge that each of us pay each month in our phone bill. That money goes to the state...
That's what I was about to say, right.
That money goes to the state of North Carolina. They have a plan in place that they disperse that to the counties.
They send it back to us.
They have a formula to, yes, distribute that to counties, and that's the E-911 money that we get monthly.
That's correct.
We have built up those funds in reserve so that we have this forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars in cash in the bank.
All right, but we didn't budget enough money when we budgeted out of this fund.
That's right.
So why didn't, well, okay, there's nothing wrong with asking about where the money's going.
Oh, no, no.
I mean, you know.
No, absolutely not. The money's actually, the State North Carolina 911 Board has certain expenditures that are eligible, and we have to, we can't spend this money on anything but those eligible expenses.
Why didn't we budget enough money, first time?
I think we just missed the number on the project.
I can answer that. I budgeted it in last year when we were working on the 911 project, and this was a piece that hadn't been completed, that didn't get moved forward. I mean, that's, I just didn't move forward in the 911.
Well, we're going to have another discussion about that in a few minutes, and I'm not impressed because budgets are supposed to be cut off at the end of the year, chopped. That's what happens in the industry, there ain't no more money going to be spent. You didn't spend it, that's too bad, we starting all over again. Now, what I'm finding out, and the reason I pulled this item from the consent agenda is, our books never close. We just keep rolling along, and if the budget was, if something was budgeted ten years ago, apparently it wasn't spent, then we can still go spend it, and that's what's happening from last year, and this is sloppy, this is sloppy budgeting.
We'd be glad to address that when it comes up, but that's what's coming up.
When that comes up, we'll address that.
This is sloppy budgeting.
Any other, any other questions? We got a motion, a second. Any other, any other question? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, six to one. Thank you, Dick. Item number six is the repair of the Northside High School Shelter Generator, Carney.
Mr. Chairman and Board, have two things. The first thing is repair of the Northside High School Shelter Generator. About a month and a half ago, in doing a readiness assessment across the county, we noticed that the high school identified one of our primary shelters on the north side was Northside High School, that the generator there is not operational. And going back and finding out, it's been that way for about a year, year and a half, the best I can tell. Emergency management before had been trying to get people coming in to repair the generator. It's not an electrical issue, it's a heavy engine issue. It's the large engine that's in it was the issue, and most people did not want to repair, they wanted to replace. And so we started getting new prices of the replacement as well as looking for repairs. We really struggled finding anybody to find that would come in to repair that type of equipment, even the major companies were saying replacement. The replacement values of something comparable were between eighty-five thousand to two-hundred thousand. You could spend more than that, you could spend a little bit less, but not on anything we would recommend to be able to put in there. In reaching back out, staff was able to identify through a local company, they had specialists that they could bring in, they could contract to bring in, that this is what they do, and they were, they gave us a price. If you look, the request opener is twenty thousand one ninety-three ninety-three. I would like to say, if you look at the actual budget amendment request that Ms. Anita has prepared, she backed the taxes out of that original request, back to eighteen thousand nine seventeen, and then added five percent contingency. So the actual request, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Anita, would be nineteen thousand eight sixty-three.
That's correct.
I know this is hard to figure, but what's the life expectancy on the repairs?
There's going to be, there's no guaranteed warranty on the repair of the generator. I mean, the generator's been there since the school was built, it was part of the original construction of the school. And so even though they're coming in and they're going to do the work, there's really not a warranty of that work that's coming with it.
So it could last a year?
It could last a week, it could last a hundred years. Well, a hundred years is probably stretching it too far, but we really just don't know.
Is a reputable company that normally does this kind of work doing this?
The company that we're proposing, that is going, that's bringing in the specialists to do it, is Piston and Ring Machine Company here in Washington. And the team that they're bringing in, this is what they do.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner.
I understand that this is one of our county shelters, and it's twenty thousand dollars now to fix this thing, and we don't know whether it's going to last a week or two weeks, but it need to be done. But have you researched to see if there's any money, like Homeland Security money, any other kind of money out there to help out to repair this thing or get a new one?
We have looked at avenues for that. Our best avenue seems to apply to the Golden Leaf Foundation. None of that is going to bring us anything in a quick response, in other words, in the next year, as we're reaching out to it. We're actually going to be applying the Golden Leaf for a generator for Southside. Right now, we're carrying a generator over to Southside and hooking up, but we're in the process of putting that together now, where we would be looking for assistance in doing that.
Is Gold Leaf the only source?
It is not the only source. We have contacted North Carolina Emergency Management, and their recommendation of where we could go and what we could look for, and between them and our county government, that's where we've been sent to as our most viable option right now. We also looked, if you'll look in your packet, we looked at rental, putting a, moving our transfer switch that is there now, and even if we rented a generator in the meantime, the generator for that size structure is five thousand dollars a week base fee. Its fuel economy is not very good. Chris, help me out on that. It pretty much has to be filled every day, and what was the gallons used?
That capacity of a generator that we could rent would have typically a thousand gallon tank, and it would have to be refilled every twelve hours of operations.
God knows, you need to burn it up.
And we have to get it, if we rent, we have to get it at least a week in advance, and it's guaranteed at that point, whether we use it or not, we have to pay the five thousand dollars. So we didn't see that as a viable option.
You're right.
You said five thousand a week?
Yes, sir.
Saw it coming.
So the intention is, is repair, and meanwhile, you're asking for a grant from Golden Leaf?
On this request is just an immediate repair to keep us operation with our current shelters, but we are going to be looking at Golden Leaf for an additional generator, which would service our Southside.
Our Southside, okay. You're not going to try and get a grant to replace this one?
Not if we can get it up and running.
Any other questions of Carney?
I got, I got one more. I understand there's some other problems with chillers and compressors at the schools, is that correct?
You don't know.
Yeah. I really couldn't answer for you there, Mr. Brennan.
That would fall under the school system itself.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Buzzio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langley. All the, any questions, further questions? All those in favor of the repair, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Okay, Carney, you got the next one?
Next item is appointments to the Beaufort County EMS Oversight Committee. There's a need for three different appointments, and would you like me to go through all three or do them individually? How would you like me to present those to you?
I would just name the three. I think we've had, we've had the chance.
We've looked through, and we have three, three different positions. The first one is our Operations Chief, Glenn Mercer, has been serving in the capacity since our last EMS director had resigned, but we want an official appointment from the county commissioners for him to be able to continue in that capacity. Doug Visson was serving as a representative from the Beaufort County EMS Association. He resigned at their last meeting, or at the last fire association meeting, for some conflicts and other boards that he has been appointed to. Beaufort, the EMS Association sent a letter appointing their current president, Captain Shane Greer, for that position. Then we had a citizen-at-large that served their term and decided not to run again, and we've had one application for that, a recommendation from our office for Jay Morgan, for the person from the public.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Buzzio, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans, any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the three...
I got a question.
Okay.
When was the last time you talked to Mr. Morgan? Oh, I see it now, it's the third, because one of those guys recently.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I got it, I got it.
Talked to him last week?
It's not him, I got you.
Okay. Any other question? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Thank you, Carney. Okay, we're down to item number eight, Legal Advice Request, Commissioner Richardson.
This is which one?
This is number eight.
I'm sorry, I was...
One fifty-eight.
This is the outside legal advice request.
Oh, okay, I skipped that, I went right through that in my book. The legal advice request. This has to do with what we're talking about with the courthouse. The, it's difficult for our attorney to represent us in this matter because he is a member of the Beaufort, of this particular district's court, bar system. So it's hard for him to give us advice about this. And we need to, and what I'm talking about when I say this, I'm talking about the overreach by the judges at the courthouse. And my motion, since we've already had a lot of discussion on this, I'm not going to beat on it anymore unless I have to, I move that we consult with legal advice outside of this judicial district on the overreach question by the judges at the courthouse.
Is that about this extended security?
Extended security, yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, comments or questions? I guess, are we seeking legal advice to tell us if we would be held in contempt? I mean, an order's already been issued, so if we don't abide by that, I'm assuming we could be held in contempt.
Let me get my pajamas.
Well, we could, but the, yes, and you're right, the legal advice, of course, as most legal advice would be all-inclusive, that is, how to proceed, what are your rights? Should you proceed? Do you have a case to proceed? How do you proceed? That's the kind of advice that we need to get.
Mr. Chairman, I think you would be held in contempt.
My thought is, conflict to aside on this, my thought is that if anything, you would want to appeal the order that he entered and let it be heard and then appealed again, because probably if you appealed the order, another Superior Court judge is going to have to take a look at it and enter some type of finding one way or the other, then that can be appealed to the Court of Appeals. I'm just trying to work it within the system. But getting a legal advice outside of this area, I don't think is going to amount to, where do you go? I mean, you're talking about Pitt County, that's a different judicial district, but those judges hold court here too, so... Well, ethically, I... Where to go with that? Well, ethically, yeah, there is, from this standpoint. Ethically, I don't think the legal advice can come from an attorney in this judicial district, because if he gives us the wrong legal advice, he's going to be punished by the judges. So you need to go find yourself somebody that can give you an honest, independent decision. And I don't have a problem with making a part of this, appealing the order, because that's what I really think we should be doing, is appealing the order. But you get advice before you appeal the order of, is it worth the time and money that it's going to cost you to do this appeal, and where do you think it's going to go, and all that sort of stuff. So I would amend my motion, if Mr. Booth were agreeable, that we go to appealing the motion.
Well, I don't have a problem with it, but you can also call the Institute of Government, they can give us some... The thing, the reason, the reason I hate this so bad is you're charging people that's already paid.
Right.
I mean, that's what bothers, and then some of us say you go somewhere else. That's your choice where you want to go. The courthouse is there for you, it's been there ever since Beaufort County been a county, all right? And I just hate that you, I mean, I hate that it came to this. But, Mr. Richardson, I told you last month, sometimes I hate to agree with you so bad, but this time you're right. You are right this time. I told you years ago what to do about this situation, and y'all didn't listen.
No, we didn't listen to you the first time, I agree, you did tell us.
Yes, and it's not fair to the people, whether you're Democrat, Republican, black, white, rich or poor, the courthouse belongs to who? The people. The people. And, I mean, why would you, now, at the rate we're going, commissioners, we're going to have to pay for the people that's cleaning up, we're going to have to have security there for them that's cleaning up tonight. Is that right?
Yeah, they were walking twenty-four hour, right, because they may let some criminal in the courthouse.
May do it.
Gee, it usually works the other way.
Yeah, you got to pay for it. And let me tell you something, going to jail ain't all bad, Mr. Richardson told you that tonight. You get three meals.
Right, good meals.
Good meals, he said. And December the twenty-fifth, you get turkey. So, but if you keep on bowing and bowing and bowing, we won't be able, well, we can't go in there now.
This is a, an article that was written in the summer of nineteen ninety-nine by the Institute of Government, and it says the county is responsible for providing courtrooms and related judicial facilities. Those facilities must be adequate to meet the needs of the court. General Statute one fifty-three A dash one sixty-nine gives a county the authority to make decisions about the property in its control and to designate the uses to which the county property may be put.
That's right. And the judges, just like this statute says, the judge is in control of his courtroom when he's in the courtroom. But otherwise, it belongs to the county and to the people, as for their use.
Okay, we got, is any more discussion? Got a motion and a second?
Did you, you amend your motion to go?
Yes, that we pursue the...
I accept that friendly amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, all those opposed to the motion, raise your right hand.
I just want to say this to the public, is you're being short-changed. This is a fantastic example of how judges and the judiciary has taken over this country and made law and taken people's property and made them do things. Unless judges had a reason for the secrecy in that courthouse, they would be willing for the public to see everything that's going on in there. And I would also say to you, there are some states that all of the trials are recorded, and everything that happens in the courtroom is recorded, and it's available for the public's use. So why is North Carolina so backward?
Okay, we're down to item number nine, Filming of the Salary Study Meeting, Mr. Richardson.
Well, this is a salary study, it involves all the three hundred and eighty employees that we have. If we give each one of them a dollar, a dollar an hour increase, you're talking about a whole lot of money. The salary study is of vital importance to taxpayers and people of Beaufort County, and it should be filmed just like this meeting is filmed, for the benefit of the public, and that's all that my motion is, is that we film the meeting for the public.
Okay, we got a motion to film the meeting, is there a second? Motion dies. Okay, we're down to item number ten, the Banking Contract and the Official Depository Resolution, Anita.
Anita. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, I'm bringing before you this evening a recommendation to change financial institutions for the county banking services. Back in April of this year, we sent out requests for proposals for banking and lot box services. Six banks responded to our request. Those bids are listed on page 164. You'll see that two banks that responded do not offer lot box services, so they were excluded from further analysis, bringing us down to four. And they are listed from low bidder first on a, and you can see the low bidder was First National Bank at a net annual charges of $2,225. As part of our due diligence, we did meet with First National Bank. We reviewed their online banking platform to make sure that it would suit the needs of the county. We confirmed with First National Bank that our analysis of their bid was accurate and the numbers were good that we were looking at. We did verify with the State Treasurer's Office that First National Bank does participate in the pooling method of collateralization. And we also checked five references for First National Bank, other cities and counties, and they had very good references. So it is my recommendation to you that we do switch our financial institution for our county banking and lot box services from our two current providers to First National Bank, and that you accept the contract with them for a five-year period and also adopt the resolution designating them as our official depository.
I got a couple of questions. Have you got a bottom line on what the difference in our old contract and this contract will be?
Yes, if you look at page 163, and these are all estimates, because these costs are driven by the quantities and volumes of our banking during the year. So they're going to go up or down either way. So this is just an estimate based on our last 12 months of activity, okay? Assuming that we do the same thing for the next 12 months that we did the last 12 months. You can see there highlighted in yellow that the benefit or savings to the county will be just a little over $111,000 annually.
There was one other thing. Does, will First National Bank take the hospital authority money in to that?
No, that doesn't have anything to do.
That's going to be a complete dissection.
That's still a separate.
That's all I got.
The, I overheard one of the commissioners. First National Bank is the old East Carolina bank, and then it was sold to Yadkin Bank, and First National is a new name.
That's right. And there was a little bit of concern on my part about that changing hands so many times. And so we did have our meeting with them. I did ask them the question, you know, what was the likelihood of that happening again? And the executive vice president attended our meeting, and he told me that although he can't predict the future 100%, he thought that their bank was very unlikely to be acquired because of their assets. They're over $10 billion. And that if your assets exceed $10 billion, then it makes you less attractive for acquisition because of all the hoops and the rules that you have to adhere to federally. And the other thing that he mentioned to me was, I'm trying to remember the other thing that he mentioned to me. Basically, what he said was that he did not think it was likely that their bank would be acquired, so.
Is First National Bank a New York Stock Exchange listed company?
I do not have any answer to that.
I don't think so.
There is a First National Bank that is, but it's not this First National Bank.
I don't have any answer to that. I have to research that.
Well, is it a stock company? Y'all were doing pretty good until I got to this question. I mean, I was ready to vote for this, but now I'm not sure who we're doing business with.
Well, I mean, in the RFP, we did request that they send us certain ratios so that we could look at their financial soundness.
Yeah.
And we did review that, and I believe Katie has brought something up here. So she, yes, it is.
It is a New York Stock Exchange. There is a New York Stock Exchange listed company as the First National Bank. Okay, well, y'all are back on track.
Okay, good.
If I remember, they ranked 33 in size.
If I could just think of the other reason that he thought we wouldn't be acquired, we'd have a slam dunk.
Well, it's not material to me. I'm ready to vote.
Well, I think it may be that First National already covers, this merger will cover the whole state. Usually, that's what they're doing, is trying to buy a market share, you know, 25 counties or something.
Yeah.
All right, I was the one that raised, in some conversation with Anita, the fact that, you know, it was East Carolina, then it was Yadkin and then.
I didn't know that, but I'm glad to know.
Yeah, I believe it was East Carolina bank, then maybe Vantage South.
That's right.
Then First National Bank.
I make a motion that we accept the bid.
Got a motion to accept the bid. Second by Commissioner Busio. All, any other comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're down to item number 11, the sale of alcoholic beverages before noon on Sunday at licensed premises. That's you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you recall, at your last meeting, you went, you reviewed this ordinance. It was voted on at that time. It was not a unanimous vote. Statutes require that any ordinance for a county has to be unanimous on first reading. So this would be your second reading. At second reading, it can pass with a simple majority. I'd be glad to go back into any of the details that you may wish. This is the, this allows for local sales of alcohol, starting at 10:00 a.m. on Sunday morning. That would be for all holders of ABC permits, whether that be onsite, offsite, beer, wine, mixed beverages, anybody who holds a valid ABC permit. Just be glad to answer any questions since the last time, or maybe not since the last time, but the municipalities, this is a separate issue for municipalities. This is only in the county's jurisdiction. But the city of Washington and the town, the towns of Washington Park, Chalkwindy, and Pantega have already adopted this early ordinance.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions? Everybody understand? Okay.
Well, I'm where I was last time. I recommend the communion wine on Sunday morning, so I'm not going to vote for this.
I'll buy you some.
All right, any other, any other comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Three, the motion carries, or three.
When did that take effect, Mr. Manager?
Sir?
When does that take effect?
Immediately.
All right, Hood, get your wine.
I see you over there Sunday morning.
I'll buy you some wine, so you can make a change.
I think the only place that you'd be able to do that would be at the country club.
Convenience stores.
They'd probably be serving all along. We didn't need to do this.
You're not going to go to church, you're not going to go to church. Somebody uses this as an excuse.
All right, move on.
All right, all right, gentlemen. We're down to item number 12, the placement of the ATM machine in the courthouse.
As you recall, at the February 12 meeting, we provided you some information about a request we'd received from a vendor to install an ATM in the courthouse. The board authorized us to put out RFPs for that. It was published, and we received one additional proposal on that. It was from Mobile Money. You'll see the comparison there between the two. The original ATM proposal was from Brown Property Management. We held that number confidential until we received any other proposals. They are proposing a 75 cent per transaction payment to the county for use of having a machine there. The only thing they need is a plug-in. And you'll see that the money management, they had a tiered response, I mean, Mobile Money had a tiered response, and that was after the first, starting at the 201st withdrawal within a month, the county would receive 50 cent per withdrawal. So based on those numbers, we would recommend to you, and I'll also say that we ran, we talked about that with the clerk of court, and they were good with it. They thought it was a good idea, and they had no objections to putting the ATM in the courthouse. We recommend to you that you contract with Brown Property Management for the placement of the ATM at 75 cent per transaction, if you pay to the county each month.
We have to provide security?
No, sir.
Hey, if you notice, they provide their own security when they're taking money out.
Well, I don't know, somebody might steal the whole machine.
Well, that's true.
All they have to do is unplug it and walk.
Well, and from that, that was part of it. We said there's no drilling in the floors, and so it's, they're not going to tear up any of the courthouse when they put it in there, so.
You got a security problem.
Did I hear a motion?
Yeah.
Am I second?
Okay, a motion by Bren and the second by Booth.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. We're down to item number 13, guidelines for the tourism funds. That's you, Brian.
Yes, sir. At your last meeting, you recall there was some pretty extensive discussion about the $15,000 in tourism promotion funds that were appropriated in fiscal year 1718. We were asked to bring some recommendations back to you, so you have that recommendation. That recommendation to you is this, that a maximum of $1,000 be provided to sponsor any Beaufort County local government or nonprofit agency event that is primarily designated to increase tourism and bring visitors to Beaufort County. A maximum of one award will be made to any one agency within a six-month period, and requests for those sponsorships would come on the first surfaces.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Busio. Is there a second?
Second. Excuse me.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Any comments or questions?
Well, my comment is, does the manager realize that his effort to be egotarian about this is going to spend a lot of time here with this board debating who to give money to? I can support it.
Well, from this guidelines, as long as it's within $1,000, we wouldn't bring it back to you.
Oh, okay.
Unless you want us to bring it back to you.
Oh, great. That's even better. Okay.
My assumption was that you approve this, we're in those guidelines.
You're going to, okay, that's fine.
Okay, any other comments? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Vote was unanimous. You did good.
I'm voting for it.
All right, we're down to item number 14, the solar farm moratorium. David?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, at the last meeting, we discussed establishing a moratorium. The, what is in your books is a suggestion for a moratorium, a couple places for dates and things to be filled in. And I am offering that as my draft of, to govern the acceptance processing or consideration of applications for solar arrays or farms pursuant to NC General Statute 153A, 340 per Ren H, excuse me. I don't know whether you want me to read this. You've got it in front of you.
Everybody's had a chance to read it.
The two things, one, of course, would be the meeting. This is, this would be a motion to adopt the ordinance. We still have to advertise and conduct a public hearing on the ordinance itself if this passes. The second page is the, are the number of days that would be required to complete the process. And as you probably know, the statute requires two different situations for advertising. The shorter period is up to and including 60 days, which requires one advertisement prior to, I assume, our next meeting. And it can be no less than seven days prior to the hearing. If we go over 60 days on this, that is 61 days and more, you've got to advertise it two times, two successive weeks, no later than 10 days, and no more than 25 days prior to the hearing, to the public hearing. So, I don't think there's anything else that I wanted to tell you about that. I tried, I tried with this to follow the statute that has certain requirements, 1, 2, 3, 4, and that's why it's divided the way it is. Understand also that you can, by motion and re-advertising, extend the moratorium if you're not ready to proceed with the matter. Let's say that you decided you're going to allow it 90 days on the moratorium. You can file a motion and re-advertise for a further public hearing to increase that beyond the original 90 days. It was my opinion in looking at this, I know that we had talked about a two-year moratorium so that we could get everything that we could possibly think of covered by our local ordinance. It's my opinion that that's excessive. And, I mean, obviously, if you pass it at two years, you could have your ordinance ready in 90 days, or 120 days, or some other thing, and then pass your ordinance. That takes care of anything left over of the two years, if you were to say two years. It's entirely up to you. Make that, I didn't feel it was mine, other than to say what I just said to you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
What he just said brings up the issue, if you're, if you have a committee working to revise the ordinance, and my understanding is that committee is reasonably close to reporting, why do we even need to do a moratorium? Why doesn't the committee just go ahead and expedite its work? Let's get it in here and vote on whatever changes you want to make to the ordinance and let that be it. Problem, one of the problems I have with this, quite frankly, and I understand there are people in this room who want to see the moratorium, you know, Beaufort County has shot itself in its foot repeatedly on economic development. When economic, people that, when people who want to move a plant here, or any other industry here, or do new business in this county, when they see moratoriums being passed to stop industries and these sorts of things, they don't come. We already have a very bad score on recruiting economic development now. And I think this is just going to make it worse. I think expediting the revisions to the ordinance is the way to proceed with this, without giving the county a black eye.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's going to take a minimum of 120 days. Because the more we get into this, and the ordinance, and state officials, counties, internal discussions that we're having, they're going to have to come back to the board to settle some of the issues. Then we have to publish, you know, have a public hearing on the ordinance. It's going to be a minimum of 120 days. And that's going to be pushing it. That's going to be pushing it. Because we have a number of people we want to bring in, and it's getting, it's not as easy as we may have originally thought. So that's one issue. The other issue is the tax issue. We can't address that issue. That's got to be addressed by the state. And you've got to figure at least, you know, maybe this session, the next session, to get something out of that, if we're able to do that. Now, there's a couple of bills pending in the House, and I can't think of the two reps, I don't have those notes with me, two separate bills on solar farms that are looking at it very closely and some of the issues associated with it, that we may be able to piggyback on that from a tax perspective. But it's, all this takes time. You know, we thought we'd be done at one meeting. And it's taking time in our discussions, and I got to say that I think the committee's working very hard on it, on having these discussions.
Yes.
I agree with Commissioner.
I agree with Commissioner Busio, and the reason that we wanted a 60-day with a chance to extend it is because we're looking at all aspects of the ordinance that we have right now, trying to make good solid decisions on which way to go on, and we may be able to get it done in 60 days, and we may not. Right now, I don't think we can. I think it's going to take a little more than that. By the time you have to advertise and do things of that nature, I think it's going to take more than 60 days.
Can I add to that, Commissioner? We've also, we're inviting people to come and appear before us from the state that are willing to come in and give both sides, state agencies, so it's going to take more than 60 days, Commissioner.
Well said, you don't need to add no more. Some parts in it that was in it now, they'd lose me, so we're trying to work it so we can bring you a good ordinance, and we can work around and probably pass.
I think the real question David is asking us, do we still want to do the two-year moratorium?
No, I don't think so. I would vote for that.
I would like to see at least a year moratorium, allow us to, it doesn't rush us on the ordinance, and plus the tax issue.
There, as Commissioner Busio has already alluded to, there is a bill that's in early stages that would try to address, on a statewide basis, some uniform way of closing down a facility, and I'm assuming with that, the other piece that probably would be involved in that, would be having a uniform performance bond, or an escrow account or something, that's straight across the board, all across the state, that the industry might even decide to have some kind of a sinking fund. At our state association meeting in Durham, we had some good conversation with the industry people after their session was over with, and I think they understand that they are running into some brick walls in some counties because of the lack that we don't have any uniform as we go from county to county. I think that if we're going to involve the state legislature in trying to get some of these questions answered, it's definitely going to take more than 120 days, what we can do locally. I mean, I have no problems reducing it from two years down to one year, but I think we still need to have a moratorium until we can get some of these other questions answered that keep popping up, and...
But is the moratorium going to affect things like Wilkinson Solar, projects that are already in progress?
No, sir.
Yeah, that's grandfathered again.
I think, and I know some people don't like to address land use, but I think we're also trying to make a decision on, you know, how aggressive we want Beaufort County to be in the solar farm business, you know, is this good long-term, and, you know, I don't think that we would convert all of our farmland to solar farms, because if you're a family farming operation, and you've got people that you can pass it down to the next generation, those people are not going to put a solar facility on their farm.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think that people that do pass their land down, and the people acquire solar farms is people that just don't want a farm, and I think it would be, that would be the only scenario that that would happen.
Okay, what kind of guidance do you want to give our attorney as it relates to the moratorium?
I'd like to, I'd like to see a 60-day moratorium with a chance to renew for another 60 days. I think we can get it done in that period of time.
That's not going to give us sufficient time to deal with the state.
Well, it requires a public hearing, even on the 60 days on our ordinance.
How about a public hearing, then with the 60 days, just dealing with the state's going to be trying.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
As you've fore stated at our state association, if we wait on the state to solve this problem, this is a problem that's going to go on for years and years and years, and if we wait and see what they're going to do, we will never pass this ordinance, because they don't know what they're going to do themselves. Some of the, I mean, you've got Sump, you've got Pro, and they got, I mean, we just can't wait to see what the state, I mean, we can't control the tax, I wish we could control the taxes that they charge, but they've been wrestling with this thing, I've been going up there, I know three or four years, you have too, they've been wrestling with the same conversation for three years.
Like, as I said earlier, one of the pieces of legislation looks at the tax issue.
They've been looking at it.
The tax issue is unfair to the taxpayer in this county.
We believe that, but they've been looking at it.
We've got to, we have to take a step sooner or later.
We can't take a step, they're going to have to take the step.
No, but nobody's pushing them. If we pass this moratorium and say, you know, one of the things is the tax issue, and the other thing is the decommissioning, we may be able to get some other counties to join with us on this, and get this thing moving, but to sit here and do nothing, I think is, we're not doing, we're not working with our residents in this county. It's going to be on their back, that these solar farms, these taxes, these possible decommissioning issues are going to be on the back of the taxpayer of this county, and I'm not prepared to give this to the taxpayer. That's where I'm coming from.
Okay, I think, I think maybe if you did it for a year, and see how you progress during that year, and then you can reexamine it and see if you need to do anything further, but I think a year is a good, is a good time period to allow things to happen, and then after that, if it needs to be extended, you can always extend it, or really, there's nothing actually preventing the board from shortening it, but I think we go ahead and do a year initially, and allow the committee to do their work, and in the same time, maybe get our lobbyists to do some work for us, and see how that goes, that's what I think.
I think you're right, Jerry, that we need, that could give us enough time to contact our legislators and kick them in the rear a little bit, get them started doing their work.
By then, we have one in Beaufort County, Jerry, be able to go to his house and talk to Jerry.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I agree with you, I'd like to say a one-year, let's take a look at it, but when we're working this new revised ordinance, let's not be looking towards Raleigh, I don't think we're going to get a lot of...
That's wrong.
We're on our own, we're east of I-95, we're on our own, so I think with the committee you've got established now, I think we can come up with an ordinance to be fair for all property owners, but hopefully fair to all property owners here in Beaufort County.
David, if we apply this one-year moratorium, at the end of that, can we ask for another year, or another 60 days if we're not quite finished?
Yes, except it is restricted, and any extension, it says no moratorium may be subsequently renewed or extended for any additional period unless the city or county shall have taken all reasonable and feasible steps proposed to be taken by the county and its ordinance establishing moratorium to address the problems or conditions leading to imposition of the moratorium, and unless new facts and conditions warrant an extension. So, it's not an automatic thing, you've got to have, you know, we're not finished yet, and making sure that you took reasonable and feasible steps to get to the finish line on this. See, a moratorium is a temporary thing anyway, it's not permanent, and it's right off the bat, it says it's, so it's for that period of time, and if you want to change your other ordinances so you can't ever have solar arrays, that's another whole different thing, but that's not through the moratorium.
Gotcha.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion that I, the comments I just made about the one-year.
Okay.
Second.
All right, the motion is to have a one-year moratorium.
Just for clarification, you're instructing the county attorney to write it up that way, you've still got to have a public hearing on this and move forward.
Right.
Right.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, six, one.
You're killing economic development, you're throwing millions out with one hand, and you're strangling economic development with the other hand. If you're going to do this, you need to vote tonight to do away with all the economic development money, because you're wasting it.
Okay, we're down to item number 15, the bid offered to purchase property, State Road 1621 in Pantego. David?
Yes, sir, and commissioners, this is, this first one is a lady, Michelle Leathers, who has made an offer, a bid of $300 to purchase this property. This was a tax foreclosure, and she has made a $100 deposit with me with a cashier's check for $100 as the bid requires. So, move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langley, although, any questions? It appears, is there an easement back to that property? It looks like it's...
She owns, or there's somebody on the right-hand corner.
There's something in front of it right there, and I don't know what that is.
We're not giving a warranty deed, so you don't have to worry about it.
All right.
Yeah, that, the county does, whatever it is, the county does appear to be in a public road.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of the sale, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous.
Just to gain clarification, it's not to sell it, it's to start the upset process.
I apologize for that, Eric. Brian?
Sorry.
All right, number 16, bid offered to purchase 15 properties. David?
Yes, we have an individual who has, I'm sorry, his LLC has offered to buy 15, and I have it listed there, pieces of property that were alleged to be tax foreclosures. I would point out there are two here that there is some problem with. The first one is about halfway down where it says off SR 1635 Pantego, that, we sold that already in June, and it just slipped by, we evidently had an old list, so he had offered to buy it, but we already sold it to Mr. Bartle in July, but we know that now, so that needs to come off of the list.
14. Can't we sell it again?
Yeah, you can.
Not me, if you want to...
You give it a quick game, claim deed, let him run.
And also, we have a, that's Mr. Bartle's deed, we find this other, we also have another problem that we've got to get an answer to. This is a piece of property down towards the bottom here, let me find it, 542...
Five what?
542, it's listed as 510.
547.
547.
I'm sorry, that's, is that in the...
It's the one in Bell Haven.
Okay, right, okay. Sorry, there is another group of five. It's a piece of property in the second group at five, it's 510 Old County Road, which also has an apparent address of 542 Old County Road, maybe. There is a, there's a mobile home on this piece of property. Beaufort County got a deed in 1947 for this property. It is on our list that the county owns it, but there is a mobile home sitting on it, and we don't know, at least at this point, we don't know whose mobile home that is. We don't know whether someone has just built on it, or we in fact, since 1947, sold this lot, that's a possibility too. So, I want that one also removed, or I suggest to you that we take that one off till we find out what the story is, we're looking into it, but we don't know. The rest of those, in that group of 15 minus one, so that leaves 14, and we have a second group of five parcels, and let me say, this is what I just told you, the story about the mobile home is in that group, one, two, three, four, five, six parcels, I guess it is. Those are the properties, there were offers made on them, but this, these properties are the pieces that we, we had donated to the county. These were not tax foreclosures down in Bell Haven on the water, and on Main Street in Bell Haven, and...
Are any of these properties the Ross property or any of that?
Yes, it is.
Well, we don't want to sell those.
I didn't think so.
There's three properties in there. That's the Easley property that's on the corner of the Little Triangle, and then the 30-some acres that was the Ross tract, and then the Tillman tract was eight acres.
Right. Essentially, item 17, which are all those, we're recommending to you reject those.
Yeah, okay.
How did they get them to the list?
Well, they get on the list because they were out there, and they belong to the county, and an offer was made, you don't have to accept that offer.
Yeah, anybody can make an offer.
But we did, we did, they were out there for people to see.
Looking at the entire list.
So, I think if the board would address agenda item 16, which is the 14 properties that David has discussed, and pull the one that's listed as off SR 1635 Pantego as being previously sold, the remaining 14 is what?
How about the one with the trailer on?
That's the next item, that's the next item. Let's do this one first.
All right, so move.
Motion by Commissioner Booth.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio, all those in favor of selling, I'm offering, offering the purchase.
Set up the purchase.
We'll have to advertise, right?
Vote was unanimous, all right, now, page 315, the next offer.
My recommendation on that one is that you reject all of those offers.
Reject all of them, okay.
Where are those properties located?
Page 315.
Do we have to have a formal vote to reject that?
Offer's been made, yeah.
Just don't make, well, if you don't make a motion, it's not, you're not accepting the offer.
Rejecting, all right.
Good try.
Okay, we've got one more item, number seven, under the consent was the purchase order carry forward, and that's you and Anita, you might refer us back to the page number.
I believe Commissioner...
Well, that was me. What I'm concerned about is these are purchase order carry forwards from last year, they should have been included in the budget for the coming year as rollovers. We should not be sitting here with something with a purchase order that has not been filled, it should have been in the budget ordinance, and there's no reason for it not to be in the budget ordinance, because all that you have to do is go look at the unfilled purchase orders, and say, we want to roll over these purchase orders, and the commissioners approve it. So, now we're sitting here as an after the fact, actually, an after the fact thing, because I suspect that commitments have already been made on these purchase orders.
That's right.
See, okay.
The commitments were made last fiscal year, you are under an obligation to pay those, they were not completed, the reason we didn't roll them into this year's budget ordinance is because we didn't know they weren't completed yet. Your budget was adopted prior to the end of the fiscal year.
What I'm saying is...
We still may have had them completed by the end of fiscal year.
If you had a purchase order out there at the end of the year, at the cutoff period, you should have known whether they were completed or not, because they hadn't been cleared.
We knew that, but the problem is you adopt your budget, your 1718 budget, you adopted that in June.
Or June 30th.
We didn't know these were, these could have been done on June 30th, so we still had opportunities to get them completed, we didn't get them.
Well, that's what we pay you that salary for, to know what has been completed and what has not been completed, so the cutoffs can be made.
But what you're not understanding is this, this is the correct and proper way to do this. The obligations were made in last fiscal...
The obligations were made in last fiscal year, we bring them forward because you have an obligation to pay those. If we would have done them and rolled them into the budget, and you'll like this, if we would have rolled them into the budget back in early June, and then we'd have completed them in July, we'd have extra money in this year's budget, which we didn't want.
Oh, you roll them forward in the budget ordinance by purchase order number, as if, and then you don't have that problem occurring, and it, you know, it needs to, are we spending the money this year?
We are spending the money.
Then it should have been rolled forward.
That's what, this is the exercise we're going through.
Yeah, but you're rolling them forward. The budget process was completed at the end of June, so why are we, why are we sitting here in September, two months later, in the next year, talking about commitments that were made last year?
Because these are budget orders, that budget, these are purchase orders that were not completed as of June 30th.
Well, what I'm telling you is, that's not full disclosure.
It is full disclosure.
No, it's not.
Absolutely full disclosure.
No, it's not.
It is the proper way.
Doesn't the state general statute say the budget's to be enacted by June, for the coming year, is to be enacted by June the 30th?
And it allows you to roll these forward as a budget amendment for those.
Providing they are included in the budget amendment, you didn't include them in the budget amendment.
Because, we're going to obviously have to disagree on this.
Well, we're going to disagree big time, because when the budget comes up next year, you know, I'm going to be making a motion that purchase orders are cut off if they are not rolled over as a part of the budget. That is good business. You go to any company in the United States, they will tell you that. Our books close, when our books close, that's the end of that. But government books never close. I found that out since I've been here.
Government books do close, Commissioner Richard.
I'm sorry, but they don't.
They close in the fiscal year, and they are required so that you throw them back into the audit, because the auditors have to close the fiscal year.
Well, let me ask you this, with tax revenue from sales tax for the quarter that we are in, I guess, that you're actually going to be paid for money that was paid last year, what year are you crediting that income to?
It gets thrown back.
Oh, wow!
It has to, that's the way it works. They're collected in that year, they have to be thrown back. There's, the sales tax is three months lag. The auditors know that, that's why they do that. There's nothing mysterious about it. Every county in North Carolina does it that way.
They may do it that way, but that's not a good business way to do it, because you never know where you are. That's what I'm complaining about. There are always, the books in government never close. That's why, one of the reasons that we owe $20 billion, trillion dollars in the federal government. Their books never close either.
Commissioner Richard, there's a big difference in federal government budgeting and local government budgeting.
I agree. I don't disagree.
We're required to have a balanced budget, and we have a balanced budget.
But at the end of the budget year, I want to know about all of the items that are carried forward, and you're sitting here saying, well, we don't know what they are, we just invent them as the year goes along. No, we don't do that.
We do not invent things as we go along. These were purchase orders that were approved by the board, that were not completed, so we bring them back to you so that they are allocated in the next year, so they can be completed. There's no double money, there's no.
Before we enact a budget ordinance, we need a listing of the uncompleted purchase orders. And that's not asking for a whole lot.
We won't have that information until 60 days after year-end.
Why not?
Oh, did Jesus.
You've got a purchase order number out there, and you haven't closed it out, why can't they be listed as unclosed purchase orders?
Because, I'll give you an example. Let's say, for example, the professional services related to the First Bank. Not sure what that contract amount was, 20-some, 25,000? So we issued a purchase order back last year for 25,000 to contract with them to do the design work over there, okay? You can see where between, whatever date we started the contract through June 30th, we paid them $15,000. Well, in July, I received an invoice for services rendered from June 1st to June 30th. So I had to post that back as an expenditure in last year, and liquidate that purchase order by that amount of that payment. But I didn't have that information until I received their deal in July.
What's wrong with listing that in the budget ordinance as an unfilled purchase order that's outstanding?
I can tell you what we have at June 30th, but it's going to be inflated, it's going to be too, too high.
That's okay.
Because we receive invoices in July and August that we have to post back in the prior year, and we liquidate the encumbrance of the purchase order and lower that amount, because it's no longer an obligation.
That's right. I don't disagree. I'm talking about disclosure. What's wrong with listing the unfilled, unclosed-out purchase orders at the end of the year as a part of the budget ordinance? What's wrong with that? Nothing? Just because you've never seen it done before?
It's not an accurate number.
It doesn't have to be an accurate number, it's disclosure. You list it as an unfilled, you don't know what the amount is, you list it as an unfilled purchase order.
I'm sorry, y'all not going to resolve this tonight.
Okay.
I mean, we have a meeting the first Monday in June, we have a meeting the first Monday in July, which I won't know at either time what the number is, but which.
You don't have to know.
Which meeting would you want?
The one that the budget ordinance is enacted at, is what it is. It's included as a part of the budget ordinance.
What you're saying is, if you did that, follow this with me, if you did that, it would be an inflated number that you would be rolling into next year's budget.
Did anybody ask for an amount of money?
No, you.
No, I didn't. I asked for the unfilled purchase order number. That's what I've asked for.
But if you don't.
Oh, you can do that. I know you can do that.
But I could have gotten an invoice from the East Group in July, that they had fulfilled the entire contract as of June 30th, then there would be a balance.
You're buried in the mud at the bottom of the creek. I'm in the boat up on top.
Okay, okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'm ready for it. No.
I mean, it is an accounting issue, it is about.
We accept item seven.
All right, good motion by Commissioner Booth, second by Commissioner Busio. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. And those opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Now, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Langley, and a second by Commissioner Booth. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
I'm standing up one.
Let's do that $900 next one. What to?